...order number two, being able to not or otherwise interview a co-option candidate. There's two ways, as I said, of looking at this. Standing orders do say that we should interview, but we do have standing orders that allow us to suspend that if we are so mindful. If we interview, then council has the opportunity to ask pertinent questions of the applicant, and then that may, before we provide information, for council to decide whether to vote for or against that person. At the same time, if council rejects it, as we currently are with vacancies, if the applicant was rejected for co-option, that person would have the statutory right to force an election. And as we were assured to, and as it unlikely that someone else is going to stand against him, that person would then become an elective member of the party. So that's what I think we need to bear in mind. Okay? So with that, and what do you want to do? We're looking at sustaining standing orders. Do you have any other comments? Yes.
Of course, I would propose that, but before we go ahead, obviously, I don't know who this person is, and they don't appear to be here this evening. Do they still want to be co-opted before we respond to this? Because I would have thought they should have been here this evening.
Yes, they do want to be co-opted.
Then I would say, why are they not here this evening?
Because they weren't invited to be here. They have no requirement to be here. My view is, and the person could be here, they'd be right to be here. My view is to have a candidate sitting there while council discusses is not fair on the candidate, and it's not fair on the...
I agree.
And it's not fair on councillors. But can council, that is my own view as chairman, council can go with that or vote against it.
Right, let's quickly, but I agree with what you said. But we've always co-opted the person, and then they've signed their papers and come up. That's the only reason I asked. But so, and I accept what you said, so then I would like to propose that we suspend.
Can we just, I do believe...
Well, I don't think it's standing. She's put that first.
Before we have a proposal, do we have anybody else which can...
What's the proposal? What I should...
The proposal is that we suspend standing orders.
Oh, right.
So we can then...
Move on.
Move on to item, general item 10.
Yeah.
So Martin is proposing to do suspend standing orders. Do you have a second there? Do you have a second there? Okay? All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. So moving on to item 10, co-option of a new member. I don't know Mr Buckston, but I have met him. I met him to explain to him how our local government at this level works, and to give him the opportunity to decide if he had the time and commitment to be able to counsel. He has, I can remember him, he is a retired gentleman, ex-professional, I think he was in education, but I'm not quite certain. I'm coming to the back. I think he was educated, he's a professionally qualified retired gentleman who has the time and interest. I think I would request council to stop, I believe you do know the gentleman. So could you perhaps add to that? If you are, yes.
Well, all I can say is that he lives next door to me. He's not a special friend, but he is a very sensible, level-headed gentleman who is calm in all aspects, but has a depth of knowledge. Yes, he was in education, but he's a master of other things, including being a chef. And I can tell you, he's absolutely brilliant, and that's beside the point, because that's not what you're voting for. But he has so many interests, and he would be an attribute to the gentleman. Not that he's probably to say of all these things, but...
He hasn't...
Not at all.
It's yours to perform.
Now, I have no problem with this gentleman. It's not against the gentleman, I'm going to speak. It's only the last time that we've never interviewed, when the three got on. When the three, sorry, a fool, when the three were co-opted. They've always been, people have always been invited for an interview, and so I don't know this gentleman, I have nothing against the gentleman, I will be voting against the gentleman because, only because the proper procedure has not been done. Thank you.
Is I allowed to speak again, or not?
I will allow it, this is...
I understand that he has been interviewed by the, what committee? What group? Joyce, I don't know that answer.
No.
Maybe you shouldn't say anything.
You just come in there...
Because it's not in form.
Excuse me? He has, I would just to, he has not been interviewed.
No.
He has been talked to by myself, explaining what council is about. He was not, he was not interviewed. I had no remit to interview him, and I did not give him any indication that he was being interviewed.
Certainly, this I can be deferred.
Just to... Counselor.
I propose that we co-opt Mr Buckston onto the case.
Just before we get to that, are there any, are there any comments?
I'll also ask you, Jim, was on the formality fielding, did that give us any information about him at all?
I have no interest in it.
Wouldn't that have been helpful if we'd have had, as you respect ourselves, if we'd have had that? Because that would have helped us make a decision whether we agree with the council or not, and co-opt him straight up, or whether we agree with council or not.
I do, I do believe my... Can we just... I believe I've provided the information that we've got, and I'll be correct? Is there any information I haven't provided, council?
The next one.
No, the information I've given, council's saying, is there anything about that? So the information provided is our answer, is it? Are there any going once more, council?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'd like to second councillor Lo, but...
Yeah, okay, before, just before we get to that...
But also, I, that we did actually vote not to interview him on there, on by suspending standing order number nine.
Thank you for that. Before we come to, do we have any other, any comments? Okay, so councillor Lo, Lo was proposing that he is co-opted. Councillor Buck, she was second in that. Okay, so all those in favour? Count? Okay, those against?
I don't support.
Those against? All right, and one... That number eight. Okay, thank you very much. So you will contact the... Right, next one then, agenda item 11. This is parking review, appendix C. Okay, agenda item C, you'll note that we now, both county councils have now produced a parking review steam proposal form, which requires, filling in, it requires the parish council, in that case, open town council, to either support or not support a proposal. If the proposal is supported, it is also asking the parish council, in that case, the open town council, if you'd want to contribute towards the cost of this, and if so, what amount. We do have order third witness this evening, who is a ward member, so I'm going to invite him to speak in moments. I would make one observation, on the form, there's a section, do you know that it is a ward member supporting this, has been said yes, and then ask for details, provide written details. I note there's nothing completed on that as yet, and perhaps one of the, well, I'm sure you've to speak on this now, perhaps you can also tell us why there's nothing on the form.
Yeah, thank you for the invite. The proposal has come about from the group of residents of Brook Road that live between, I'm sure you're familiar with it, the Trent Road into Brook Road and the school itself. There's a lot of existing traffic calming in present, in position there. Now, the school has had a new car park added further up the hill, as I'm sure you know, towards Rook, and the theory was, mums and dads would come along to drop off their children, they would come up Brook Road, into the car park, drop the children off, and then leave by the same route. So there would be a circulation of traffic along Brook Road, down the car park, and away. And what's happened is, because I see things in more wisdom, didn't actually take the traffic calming or restrictions to the end of Trent Road. There's a huge, what's the word they're looking for? People are competing for spaces on that short section of road there, parking the cars there, because they don't want to be bothered to go into the car park. What's happening there is causing a bottleneck. So instead of the circulation being allowed to continue, there's a bottleneck being caused there, which is preventing traffic from around. So the proposal from the residents, to my mind, the reason I'm standing here is it makes sense to me, but you make your own, as you decide. Do you want to... No, no, I'll just... I don't want to go on the rest of the program, but I hope that clarifies the situation. It's to relieve the bottleneck, so that there is a free flow of traffic around there.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Matt.
Yes, thank you, Mr Buckston. I'd like to move further to recommendation, I think this is a brilliant idea. This is just typical of parents, and it does annoy me with parents with children that seem to think that to park next to the zigzag and leaving the zigzag free is safe for their children. I go past the school every morning on my way to Stanford, and it's double zigzags on both sides, so they park on the verge. And that is still covered by the zigzag, but they, and they let their children out onto the road. And I think any road safety that we can do for the school of the children, and to be honest with you, I actually think these residents are sick and tired of it. Because if it's anything like my house, when they drop the kids off at the nursery, I can't get out by drive, because they park outside my drive, I walk down to pick their children up. And there's nothing more infuriating, so I have no problem in supporting the proposal to support this. I will not be supporting the proposal to give a contribution. This is a highways issue, and therefore highways should pay for it, not the parish council, this county council matter.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Yes, and I, maybe it's, and I agree that, but mostly not, the council has said that, so I won't repeat it. But what I do have a problem with is yellow lines, and it has slightly changed, is that the council doesn't put timings on it. So then the people who might be visiting most residents during the day can't use it. I have no objection by stopping people during the school pickup and drop off, stopping there, because I believe Ruffington County Council is this big in obtaining the Woodland Trust property, which is now a car park specifically for dropping off children. So, you know, I don't see too much of an issue for them to drive a little further up the road and go to the car park, which actually has a small gate directly into the school. But also, I would not support financial contribution either. So it used to be in two parts, I think.
Well, good, yes.
Knowing this road very well, if we're going to have yellow lines there, I would suggest we have yellow lines the whole of that road, because it is absolutely impossible sometimes to get down that road safely. It is an absolute nightmare, there's parking on both sides of the road, and it's a death trap. So I would propose that the yellow lines for the whole of the road.
The proposal that's in front of us is...
I want to interview.
Joyce? Yeah, I can't, thank you.
Sorry.
Just to clarify, the proposal in front of us is by this section of the road. If you want to make a counter-proposal, it will come to that when we finish the debate. Okay? Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Yes, I know this area, a little on the road, but not far away. It is a problem. We mustn't digress from the case in point, but as Chair of Housing, I'm aware of further development in that area, possible further plans, so it's going to be an increasing issue. And the schools are growing. I'd like to just really, though, ask a question of Mr Bird. He's supporting, and I gather, it seems Mr Clifton is supporting this. How far has it got with, in RCC? Is it a general feeling that RCC will support the proposal?
Mr Buckston? You mind? It hasn't got to RCC yet, Peter. Basically, it won't, it won't go for, it won't go to RCC without support. So as far as they're concerned, there's nothing happening. We just, we started at the bottom, filled the form, and brought it to yourselves to look at. And if you're in agreement backing the proposal, then it'll go to RCC. So there's no progress beyond this point in time. Can I briefly, I mean, I have to say, I agree entirely, I don't know why you should be asked as a parish council to contribute to these markings. I've got a feeling that that is in there to cover other occasions, and not, not like adding some markings to the road. I can't really work out why you should be asked to contribute to it.
But we are, we do check on it.
I'm pretty likely for when we're asked to carry them across it.
Right, going back to then councillor Stig, do you wish on that?
Yes, I do. I very firmly feel that you might make that. And I made a proposal that these yellow lines go at least the full length of that road to the, to the, what's it called? Trent Road, I've forgotten, well and away is it to the bottom? Can't remember the road name. That, just on one side perhaps, but definitely the whole of that road, because it is a death trap. And it's one of the main feeder roads into there where we know there's going to be more development, and I just think it's vital that we just can get down the road safely.
As I could tell, so you all mentioned, I was sort of recommending to Rockhampton and to council, that we have a line, bringing up the road.
On one side?
On one side.
To talk about, come back on, because I think, point of information, as I was asking for, or a point of order, you can't change what we're being asked for. This is consultation paper. We have been asked to be consulted on this paper. You cannot change that paper with another proposal.
We're not suggesting we change it, but if we can make another proposal as well. Is there a second of that proposal?
No.
No, so that's the board's. Okay, so going back to original proposal, do we have a proposal? Have we finished the debate?
No.
Thank you. Please carry on.
Thank you. Yellow lines outside any school is not a deterrent. They will still park where they want to park. We have another three private schools in the same, having the same problem. So if we have yellow lines there, all right, some of those have, particularly one that I know, has got quite a big pride. However, it's the same on cricket balls, it looks a mess. People, visitors can park to get to see their friends, and I would be very sad to see yellow lines alongside a school. They will, it's not a deterrent, they will still park there to drop their children off and pick them up. I'm sorry.
Any more debate?
No, I would like to, put the addition, that's an additional proposal, that we make a comment about, about the time is of it. So it's not a, no stopping waiting at any time, it is just for the school, the school hours, and then that solves the council's problems.
Can we please allow councillor Buck to speak?
So that's my comment, and my request is that the council make a comment with this supporting it, that it's not an all-day, an all-night restriction. And maybe make the comment as a council, that they don't actually enforce them all the time, because I live in Willow Crescent, and I see what goes on with a school.
I think if we wish to make a caveat, perhaps?
That's right, caveat.
Then we would need, it would need to be specific. So what are you suggesting?
Well, the caveat is that if we accept this proposal from the residents, is that the restrictive time is only on a plate which says, I believe it's school time, maybe between eight and nine thirty. I don't know what time that school opens, I don't have the children, so. And then again, when they close at three, is it three o'clock? So we would need to, it would be, it would be, it wouldn't be specific of the times, but it would have to give the times.
That's okay. I'll just go to the... Just to come back in.
Very, very briefly. The residents concerned have asked that it isn't time restricted, because what's happening is they have visitors to the school, they're parking in the properties, which is creating the same problem. They have staff members who, they're competing for living spaces at the front of the school, they're parking there, which is exacerbating the problem further. So it basically restricting it to certain hours in the morning to pick up and drop off won't actually solve the problem. Thank you.
With that, I mean, for that council, do you, councillor, do you wish to withdraw your caveats?
Well, it's common habit on the, on the form here.
I think it is also...
We seem to have a choice, a single line, which could have a caveat on it, but there's also something about an across the double. So we have, I'll really ask to decide what they want, can the councillor, because we see him actually saying he didn't want restrictive time, but the other lines generally single give that option. So are they asking for the double yellow line?
The answer is basically they're happy, they're into any traffic calming that they can get, their preference would be the double yellow line, which would solve the problem.
Double yellow line, there's no parking at any time.
Bye.
Councillor, yes, I'm...
Just that, why, and there was only two houses not asked for it, I don't quite understand, because they're right next to the school, they're the ones that would be used most of all, but they haven't asked for it. So I was suspicious, and I didn't really want it, that.
It's democratic principle, the majority of residents concerned were in favour of putting the proposal forward. Not everybody, but the majority of residents concerned were.
I'm just getting a... Do you have that, councillor Buck, do you wish to withdraw your caveat or continue that on?
It's difficult, we've got to decide which one we're going to support first, so at this moment, I'll withdraw it. But if we go for the single line, then I'd like to tip that.
On, 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 believe.
Stay with that first.
The choice is here, but the councillor has said that they would prefer the double, that they're giving a choice here. It's not very clear.
So do we have a proposal for a double yellow line?
The proposal I've made, it is what was recommended, but if we need to change that, then either withdraw my proposal, or neither proposal, will we support this, the residents in this application for a double yellow line with no time restrictions to help try and alleviate them on their contractual problems?
Do we have a second of that? A second of that, and then yes, the proposal is that it is a double yellow line indicated on the draw. So we would not look at the cost at the moment, we should just do, it was a proposal, a second of a double yellow line. So all those in favour?
Two, one.
One, two, three. Those against? One, two, three, four. Okay, so that falls. You're standing. You're standing, I saw, yeah, okay, so that's, it falls. So do we have another proposal?
I would like to propose the single yellow line with the caveat, but although I need to propose, but I want to get it right, with the caveat of the restriction, just the restriction of line during drop off and collecting.
Okay, do we have a second of that? Second of? Next, there's a single yellow line. With, 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 it's a single yellow line with specified restricted hours.
Which would be the school opening and the school closing times Monday to Friday.
And that is set in, you're all happy with that?
It's the request that was put to me from another...
Okay, thank you. We all watch the proposals.
Listen, Mr Chairman, I'm looking for another point of information, because at the end of the day, what we are providing, what you've just said and proposed, is not what we're being asked about. We're being asked as a consult team, not to change what the residents have asked, we've been asked as a consult team, do we agree with this paper, yea or no?
Do they have any questions?
No, I think the paper's...
Okay.
I'll withdraw my caveat, and we will go for a single line, and then, and then I will ask the chairman if he would write my comment, which has come from a resident about only during the school hours, Mondays to Fridays. So because it's not clear at this form, it's a hurdle, and no offence to the council behind me.
Thanks, you're welcome. I'm just, because I'm...
So I will withdraw the caveat at the moment, and ask for a comment to this extent.
I'm getting, we're getting current arguments here, I'm getting a little bit caught up on this.
I agree with what the council has said.
Please. So we now seem to have, we have voted against a double yellow line, or support, we have voted against supporting the installation of a W A line. There now seems to be some disagreement on whether we can support or otherwise a single yellow line, and...
It said it would be a single or double.
It said, yeah, it says single or double, so my understanding is that we can, as we have done, reject supporting a double yellow line, but we could, if we so wish, recommend or reject a single line. Would you agree with that, councillor?
They don't want it.
I put you on the spot, but that is my suggestion, but I would like your...
The, as I said, the residents in law would appreciate any traffic calming. I agree with what the councillor made, I mean, proliferation of the other lines is just dreadful and deadly, but... I would hate to get much of the much independence of the, I'd just carry the zigzags down to get them out.
No, but we, we, would you, would I, would you agree with me that, with that, what I'm saying? We rejected a double line, of supporting that, but the form, where it's written, does allow us to reject or accept supporting a single.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just...
Yes. Yes. I know, I know, but you could afford to the time.
Okay, yes, I'll listen, thank you.
Yes, Peter. I think we're really making a meal of this. I agree with actual wrong, we've got a paper in front of us, we, what we're being asked, are we happy to support the proposal? And the proposal is a little bit ambiguous, but I think if we just support it, the councillor can go away, and it's either single or double, as they feel fit, the hardware's authority can look at it, and hopefully at the end of the day, the right result will come through. I think we're trying to sort of solve the problem in advance, I think we should do it later on. So my proposal would be, we just take it as the agenda right, and we support... So my proposal would be we just take it as the agenda right and we support the proposal.
Well, what we have done, we have voted to not support the double yellow line. The, this, as you pointed out, it does say, that's what it is, a single yellow line dash double. So we've got, we've, we've, well, it's on our cell phone, it's not now.
Can I make a second that we support this, but we obviously, because we voted against the double yellow line, I think London County Council should be notified that the council objected to a double yellow line, because that's been voted in, but I would second it as a proposal that we support this document.
Okay, so a second of that, no, no, we can't, we can't support the whole document because it says that we're going to give some money, no.
No. We are, we are, we are doing this in two stages. One is if we do support this and the second stage we do is support that, then we've got that. So do I, do I have a second of?
Yes, I do have a second.
Who proposed it?
This one.
At your second.
Okay, but the last, we do notify them that you did.
So one is a nine point.
Oh, let's just, let's just have one person speaking please, this, you know, it's like. Well, nobody will comment, so are you happy with that?
Yes, but they need to be told that because we did do a vote.
You answered, you answered some of the comments.
Right, the council supports, but that they objected to a double yellow line.
We're now, we're now going to vote on a
Terminal.
Single yellow line, we've got a proposal, second of, all those in favour of single yellow line, would you rate my comments?
The secondly, the single yellow line.
Please, please have one way to put it, chairman.
I can't hear.
It has been proposed by Peter and seconded by Martin that we do support a single yellow line. Do you agree with that?
No.
Well, I support, I support.
We're supporting your recommendation.
Okay, so we're supporting the recommendation, let me try to recommend, so the proposal is we support the recommendation. You've seconded the recommendation, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so all the.
But we need to say that we objected to the double yellow line because that's already been voted on.
Yes. Put that on.
Yeah.
Right, so can we have a vote? All those in favour, please say so.
What's all those?
No, we are, we are supporting the favour. We are voting on supporting the proposal. Those in favour?
With parking restrictions.
Yes. Are you, you are, one, two, three, five, six, four, against? One, extensions, one. Thank you, the second one is are we prepared to make a contribution, I believe you have some costs. Is it probably costing ten?
Yeah, we decided the nine hundred and twenty four pounds.
Is that what we're the amount to contribute, was it a small cost?
Well, that's what the cost was.
So the total cost of it is circa a thousand pounds? Do we wish to, to provide any financial support for that? Please, I'm sorry, no. Can we debate it for us?
I'm sorry, you're the presenter. I'll, I'll also. Well, yeah, just, I believe the doubt, Jen.
Does anybody wish to debate it?
Yes, I'm. I think when, if we all calm down, naturally, uh, landy would be, yeah, um, I believe we should defer the item there, because if the deal breaker is that the county council, fine because of their cashless face, they should not put lines down. The town council might wish that they then decided to support it financially. We could defer that until we have a county council, and we don't have to make it too much.
Thank you, councillor Brooks.
We can't defer it because this form has to go in and this form now has been created because of when we used to get silly, like a request for a meter of double lines out someone's, outside somebody's house, so, so we can't actually defer it.
Thank you. No, so do we have a proposal?
A proposal. No financial proposal.
The proposal is we do not provide any financial support. Do you have a second of that? Do, all those in favour of not providing financial support?
Set another.
Against? Thank you very much. Okay, now we come to the next one. Which is, uh, which is a tender item twelve, and this refers to appendix D. I would point out in this instance, we have not received a new parking review scheme proposal form. Would you like to open the debates, councillor Brooks?
Yes, I was wondering if at first we should write to the resident and point out the new procedures that are required by London County Council and also apologize for our errors, which have forced this letter to be sitting around since the twenty fourth of March, which we have if that's acceptable, so I don't think we can make any discussion because we know they're required complete, they're required to complete that form, which we previously done.
Okay. Any others to be coming on?
Yes. Just fired by the letter, which states I would like, um, to ask RCC to consider, are they confusing that sort, has RCC been involved in this? I mean, can I ask the councillor?
Chair, can I make a suggestion? If you, if we'd help to get through this item, would you like me to take this to the appropriate RCC councillors who should be involved in it and they can contact the residents, so I've got the, I think I've got the contact details here and they can get the proper form and do it through the proper procedure, would that help?
He's doing it. There's no more debate, I would like to propose that we defer this item and that we take our, well, it was kind suggestion that, that he takes this back and that the residents will wish to pursue this, that they could have been correct or, and then we can and comes back to us, can you put it on to the council or put it on to the council agenda?
May I ask, could you, but, but the, yes, we asked you, could you give me the?
Yeah, absolutely.
You seconded it. Okay, so we're all clear with the proposal that we defer this item until, to the aid of, kind aid of Oliver, we do get the correct form to us to consider. Martin's seconded that, all those in favour of that?
Sorry.
I think that's, was that, did you, you, it's asking us, thank you very much. Very much your support there. Do you need that, please, to support you? Right, item thirteen, statement of accounts, appendix E, to decide whether for a third estate will be counted during two thousand and seventeen. Do you wish for us to take the part? Come on upstairs, please.
Can I have your answer, A, one? What, what was this six hundred thousand accepted for, apart from the fact that it was a legal information, but what was it for, please?
Um, it was for a, a legal advance that, um, we thought she for legal advance.
Legal advance for?
I, I've just said it was for legal advice, but what was the legal advice for? Right?
Okay.
Page.
Please, do this is not the floor.
Um, page, page. In the category thing, it says office keys, have I had some new office keys and some new locks or something? Page, I don't understand that.
Uh, we, we did, yes.
Because they got jammed?
Um, because my keys are stolen.
So the.
I can't, I'm doing. My keys, the office keys were stolen, so I had to get the lock replaced as soon as possible.
And we've never found out who stole them?
No.
All right, I.
Thank you.
Clear.
Martin, you want to come in?
Yeah, I, I had a concern about those before, um, and it was said that finance policy group sent to look into it and the amount of money that's held in one, one account is far too high.
It's paying the.
So in the balance, we, we shouldn't be holding.
Can you, can you speak to the chair, please?
Yeah, sorry, now let's be direct.
Can you, please, can you, can you just clarify what account was the?
Well, it's the HSBC deposit account, which has nearly three hundred thousand pounds in it. But we're only protected up to, what was it, changed in January? Eighty five, and, and people right the way back to our previous bar have kept constantly saying they will look into it. It's too much of a risk, sorry, and I'm sorry I have to refute myself on it. It can't be difficult to find two other banks.
I will, I will respond to that. The finance working group is currently looking at other providers who take uh, out of money. It is limited because following the Iceland grant a few years ago, there are a limited number of financial bodies that will actually accept, for whatever reason, won't accept local property funds. However, there's two things over here, we are looking at local society who have confirmed they will accept funds from local authority. Um, going back to the, the risk associated with HSBC. Um, I don't know whether, I'm, I'm not qualified to say what risk our money was at with that organization. I need to say that their, on the last balance sheet, it was measured in billions. Um, so I think, completely underpinned by the pennies, I'm not in the council, that our money is very low risk. But that we are currently looking at, we must have reached to boot somewhere council's.
Can I just tell you one other thing is related to the accounts. What I would say is since I've become a, a signatory, I like seeing certain paperwork and procedures which I've asked for in the past, but maybe the quality that's been implemented, I'd like to say that I'm satisfied and pleased with the way um, things are handled, the processes for payments at the moment.
Thank you, your comments? Anybody else? No, okay, so can I have a proposal? It's Peter, so it's a second of?
Okay.
David, all those in favour? Against? Extentions. Thank you. Item fourteen, appendix plan for the OCC building appendix F. And this is simply asking the council to authorize uh, using the, the, um, people who are, the solicitor who are the agreement to prepare for the duty release agreements. And the cost of that is probably fifty pounds plus the AT, which is public. Here's councillor Brooks.
Um, I have a slight issue with this because obviously I was appointed to the working group for this and it wasn't until the day before I resigned from the working group was I aware that the person who wants to rent from us is still asking for changes to the terms of pay which was agreed by this council. Um, I was sent an email, which I did copy to other members, which had the ladies' comments all in red, such as things as that they don't want to pay the mortgage.
I just, I'm going to stop it.
But that's just, yeah, I won't go into all of it.
The, the, the major funders is, is asking council whether they agree or not to employ this person to produce, to produce the lease clause, not, not what they're going to receive, I think it's maybe five hundred and fifty pounds.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm giving a brief reason why I feel that I can't support it, because I don't think we're at this stage ready to have someone draw up a lease when somebody is asking some quite important questions, because I think there are matters still outstanding and that needs to be resolved.
Chair, yes, can? This is one of those chicken and egg situations for me, um, we need to prepare a draft lease just in case the applicant actually gets her planning permission. But, this is the, the, the flip side to this, we're going to spend over five hundred and fifty pounds preparing this lease. If she doesn't get her planning permission, that money's gone. So, and I'm not, still not mindful that she's going to get planning permission, knowing that she's already been refused planning not for a thousand yards up the road in a residential area due to the noise. And that was the same proposal, she was going to put in twenty thousand pounds worth of soundproofing and it was turned down. And I can still see it is being turned down. And as of this evening, when I left at quarter to seven, there has been no planning application notification posted in Princess Avenue, so I presume that she hasn't even got her planning application in yet. So really for me, I think we should, I, I, I agree with Martin, I think that we should wait now until the planning applications actually are gone in or has been decided.
Okay, I'm going to respond up to one of the people. We have resolved to lease the building subject to one approval. That's one, and secondly, on, on the sound, I can tell you that it was there at the time. Um, Rotherham County Council did have concerns about the sound. They have, SIBS carried out their own tests. They have confirmed in Vurrid, I was there, they have confirmed that there is not an issue with sound to the extent where, to, to, I'm speaking, thank you, to, to the extent where in front of me they suggested to the prospective tenant that they do not need to install additional soundproofing. I thought that's all I can say on that.
Can I ask for other information, Chair, because can I ask you, A, where was it taking place, B, when did it take place? And why was, if it was, if it was actually in the building itself and has taken place since the last meeting of the OCC working group? Why was no other members invited to that and why was it not on the last OCC paper?
I can answer that, because I was there simply to open the building. So when I was there as an observer, I was not involved in any way with the sound testing, I was simply there to unlock the building and I could see what was happening and I could hear what was being said. It hasn't been reported to council on the OCC, um, thought of, of their action plan because nothing has yet has come in writing from the towns. I've simply responded to the concerns you raised about the sound, with the sound testing, whatever the equipment they use, I'm, I'm a sound engineer. I'm just reporting what I overheard being said.
Yes, much of what I was going to say is my thing covered, but I, what I would then ask is that perhaps by the next meeting, uh, we reform this group because otherwise it can beander along. I think it is very important that we have certain structures, we need two or three members for part of the group, they meet together as a committee, subcommittee, working group, whatever we want to term it. This is an important building for us and we want to be on the right track and I think.
I'm just also, sorry, to draw, I did to councillor Brooks, I refer that as well. We should, we discussed it well.
Yeah, but it's.
But we are, we are, we are, we have, just to cross back, we have resolved to lease the building, um, but what we're debating now is providing the funds for the lease agreement to be drawn up.
Thank you, Chair, during the broken train. For those who.
If you wish to remain seated, just.
Now, I had this book through my door. It's from Sarah Gott, owner and dancing instructor. And she's been round all the houses. What I'm trying to say is exactly what David just said. Why spend this money when we don't know when it's going to happen? Because I've had residents in that area objecting. I've also had residents objecting to it being nine o'clock at night. What I object to is spending money when we don't know what we're doing with five hundred pounds or whatever it is. I'm sorry, I, I can't spend public money when we don't know what we're doing.
So, look, would you come back in one more time?
Yeah, I would like to propose that we don't completely reject this amendment, that we just defer and also make a proposal that a working group is set up again and it's all looked at properly. Because, um, I don't want to lose this. A lot of people have fears of this thing, but she is smack bang in a very enclosed residential area at the moment.
Can, can we just get that on track?
So that's my proposal is that we defer it.
Let me just, sorry, let me just bring us back on track. We have already resolved to lease the building.
We know that.
We, we have already resolved to lease the building subject to planning approval. We cannot revisit that and there's no, there's no reason, sorry, six minutes. That's what we resolve. What, what we're now considering is the cost of preparing a lease agreement. So.
I'm, I'm asking for, my proposal was that we defer it. And then we defer it at the next meeting, set up, we only defer it until the next meeting, but at the next meeting, we set up a working group as well. That's my proposal.
We're going to keep to the agenda.
That, you're allowed to make a proposal and that is my proposal, that we defer it until the next meeting.
Yes.
And we reinstate a working group to take control of what's going on here. So that's my proposal.
Then that's, we've got to propose, well, I'm going to make a, oh, well, does anybody want to make a proposal to, for the agenda?
Sorry, I've made a proposal, yeah, and that is now in the air.
Yes, there's a debate. Have we passed the debate now?
Do you wish, do you wish to answer it?
I don't know.
Please.
Right, um, I think that in the view that we've already agreed that the city can take this place on, could we not pass the fact that we will give the money when the need arises? So we.
That's, that's exactly.
Then why are people arguing about it?
But don't you respect, Jen, we're not, what, what, what the record is.
Sit down.
Please, we're not. The other man's, we've finished.
Well, I don't know now because people are computing me again. Just, just listen, if we're not saying we're spending it now, but we will be spending it, we will be spending it, which was just being handed out by the clerk, then we can pass it because we're not going to spend it yet. It's going to be passed so that when the need arises, it can be spent.
Order, order, Jen, because at the end of the day, the recommendation, as I'm on this paper, is council approves the quotation and council solicitor is instructed to produce a draft lease agreement. If you move this, then.
Can you speak to that?
Sorry, Jen, if, if this is passed, the clerk has, will then instruct the, the solicitor to produce a draft tomorrow morning.
Doesn't say.
Can we, Anne, please? Mark, I think you want to come in.
Well, I need that. If it's subject to, if she gets banned from the group, she might not get banned from the group and then, then, then the council won't be paying the money anyway. This paper is just.
That's not the way.
Excuse me, I just, the money.
Chair, how, how, how would, just, I could, I could help you, I could help you. Yeah, I'll, I'll come, thank you for the money. That was all I was going to do, Jen, I was going to say that. I would, I would like to propose that the council approves the quotation and the council solicitor is instructed to produce a draft lease agreement upon planning approval.
Yes.
Point of order, how may I propose, well, there's one on the table.
Listen, I'm seconding, I'm seconding.
Haven't given the chance yet to be seconded.
Counselor, highlight, so, I think that's a moment if.
Yeah, that's right.
Your proposal is that we defer it.
This is defer it until the next meeting and at the next meeting, we also set up the working group to ensure that things are being done properly.
Do you have a second? Second, is that, all those in favor? Against?
It's not the same, no, I'm still.
And, and. Are you sure?
Yeah, he was then said was my, he was the second.
Right, so that falls, so was now Ryan, can't.
My, this is a static motion.
Now my proposal?
That the council approves the quotation and the council solicitor is instructed to produce a draft lease agreement upon planning approval.
I second that.
That is secondly my voice. We're all clear on the proposal? Those in favor?
Four, five, six, seven.
Those in place? Abstentions? Okay, so that's. Right, please, Councilor Brooks? Why, General Entropy and General I, to decide work exclusive pressing progress under section one of the Publicholder of the meetings act, Act sixty, as amended, shall be considered as item fifteen on the agenda as it concerns confidential matters and item sixty as a precaution of confidential matters.
Jen, I, I'm not sure that we need to accept the public trust because all we're being asked to do is to employ somebody and there's no confidential information in the public domain. That's all we're being asked as a matter of fact, we said we won't discuss any other matters.
Um, it is, it is a recommendation, supported by the chairman, that this does become a recent topic. Anybody else who's been debating? So I'm, I'm proposing that. All those in favor?
Thank you for resolving the passing issue of your job. Sorry, it proved to be debatable if you.
So, sorry, all those in favor? Can we just get the vote, because all those in favor?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Against? Abstentions, carry, we've finished some of the.